So you know.
That's from the emergency.
If we're ready to call. So first word is that it's only here and right here.
I don't want to, I really don't. Forgot you.
Same as just three of us.
That's the.
And your face here. I was first. Oh, first word is to two minutes on last meeting, seven, they're on you. And. There are no handicaps, so this actually. Is right over here, so you guys can look at. Documents for you guys, so.
Hi, Ms. Margory, this is Councilmember Ralph. It's really hard to hear. So I would like to request that you all move the computer closer to the speakers so that everybody can hear what's going on. We just hear like little noises every now and again. Ms. Margory.
Hi, hey, Councilmember Ralph, it's you. Can you hear me?
So it's it's hard to hear you all because you're very far from the computer. Hello?
Yeah, we'll try to reposition it right now.
Okay, all right, thanks.
You may have to bring the whole computer, it's probably not gonna reach.
Is it plugged in? You hear a little better now?
Absolutely, it's yeah, it's it's much better, thank you.
No problem, I'm gonna move this a little more, just so it's not so close, I don't want it to give you like a. There we go, okay.
Mission in depth, but one of these. Documents have a different address.
So this is his new address, he just gave us. So he. At the date that he changed this. This is.
And should change the address.
Change of address is right. So this is like if you go to NVA, they give you a change of address sheet, this is.
The forms that we get, that's not as far as.
Like what forms were need to be submitted. Do you want to put the blank forms in the table before?
No, you know what, we should all get to look at the information on each candidate. No, I don't, I just want to put that person's on. That particular. Yeah, I found out. When we looked, this is the same thing that we look at everywhere.
Yep, that's the same, all the same forms. So these are all the ones that he just filled out. For candidates.
Thanks. For days one of the ones that has a different address. But maybe this is the first one that we got.
I don't see, it just says that it's for.
Thank you.
I've just had a question on that one matter, but I can move to if you wanted to start the vote.
Yeah.
It seems on. Great, sorry, and the unit to certify on Mr. Bridgeman's candidacy.
Next thing, we have some copies of the ballot format, and we just want to get it approved by you guys, so you can work on. And get finalized if you guys don't have. We also talked about the train, I think they're dropping off the. So we just have the tab with the train.
How much distance is the train, I mean, is it something that's needs a lot of work or something simple? I didn't do it last time, I did it manually last time.
I wanted to hear either, were you guys?
I was here a little bit. It does not take long, I would say fifteen, twenty minutes ago.
Okay.
Especially have a lot of questions. I could take very expensive. She actually does the challenge. Yeah. And if you want to, you can, you know, when the person comes in, you brought up the part, the person's name, you sign it. And give us back, and we finish the reality. And we said we choose the towns. You know, the red, now that we said. Something, so we shouldn't take anywhere, I would say top thirty minutes to get training. Unless we have a lot of sessions.
So we want to try for the twenty eighth or twenty ninth, which is a Tuesday or a Wednesday.
This morning? So what's the twenty eighth?
It's on, it says it's Tuesday, it's on a Tuesday.
Twenty ninth, so.
Oh, yes.
Give them one of those, give them a good for me.
Um, totally, potentially, I remember about this apartment on the twenty eighth. Okay.
So the twenty ninth is what we need to do next year or this time.
Better do like ten thirty? A little earlier, is that okay? Or are you gonna do it twelve o'clock?
I don't know, two.
Twelve, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't mind it early, but. Yeah. You know, whatever you want, it's not.
So the twenty ninth at twelve?
Um, no, it's good.
Okay.
You know, especially since she says it doesn't take that long, so.
Yeah, okay, that's fine, so twelve o'clock on the twenty ninth, everybody's in a hurry to pack.
Yes, yes.
Yes, so there's copies of what the ballot would look like, now they've certified the second candidate for mayor. The spot that currently says write in for the mayor. So the official candidate, oh, it says, yeah, second A candidate, that will now be. For the candidate to certify. Yeah. So Mr. Bridgeman. Put forth the name affidavit form, but I believe Ray had received the correct rate.
Yes, I received.
And the form says right on it, so he's requesting to use an alternate name that he goes by. And I believe had done that in a prior election. However, the form says right on there that requires two additional affidavits or two press accounts. So you see down at the bottom of that form, you check the box saying you do not have initial press accounts. But in the top, on the instructions, it asks for two affidavits from other people, but that's what he's coming in with. So anyway, we wanted to put that before you, you do need to finalize the ballot to get those ballots printed. So it's up to the board to determine how that candidate's name should appear on the ballot. Everything that we've received is there in front of you.
So do we have this, there's two? People certify the name, I mean, you say something about them.
I don't believe that was received, Ray, was that received?
By the template that's.
No, okay.
Certified, you asked those two people?
We did not receive it.
No, we didn't receive it, we just received the one page.
He is supposed to submit two of those two.
I believe so.
We can't hold hands up waiting for him. He needs to comply when necessary, I understand.
Yeah. He brought in a bunch of paperwork in response to the board's last request for paperwork, and this was, this was the one page we believe we received. So let me do that.
It was just that one page.
I propose to be. Today is Monday, he needs to get it into the store. Wednesday, at the latest, otherwise it's neither bank or here on that. Second, because if if something happens, it's gonna be on us as supervisors that we didn't catch something, and we'll be responsible for that information. Not, we're not getting that information, so I agree with Miss Williams.
Okay, we say by Wednesday at ten AM, so that we can, in terms, correct the balance, we agree?
Yes, and I think they also need to. Set the date. They'll give these our candidates names to candidates.
Yeah, I'm trying to hear you, I'm sorry.
When do we need to set, we need to set a date for when the names need to be, it's on, to give the ballot, to make sure that they're on the ballot properly.
So these are directly supplied by the candidates on your candidacy forms. Which which you've been through, so they were just transposed directly from the forms into this form, so.
Or again, we're just waiting, yeah. On the second, third. Yes, until the end.
I think that's everything we. Wait, is there anything else you can pick up?
If you can do the approval of the absentee ballot or something?
No, so if you, yeah, I guess, did you vote to approve the ballot format? What I would request is that you vote to approve the ballot format, subject to the proposed meeting. So so the ballot would be exactly as you see it, there's a ballot in your packet for award one, for the award two. And where it currently says second A candidate. I would suggest that it either say, if if the two additional documents come in, then it would say. S. Donnie Bridgeman, and if the two additional documents don't come in, would say someone D. Bridgeman. Because that's what was on the form that was submitted.
Okay, and that's what we must send the ones in, or the people. To look at them like this, and. Other times, it's legal, maybe. On the floor, he just listed, and that's what those people. Instead of this, he really wants this.
Right.
On the ground, because most people, you know. Not being the same. So that's people send the forms, and we see forms.
So if we can have a vote to approve either of those two ballot formats, then immediately following ten AM, whenever those documents come in, sooner or. Whenever the documents come in, or immediately after ten AM Wednesday. Kim can send off that formalization to the ballot production, then we can get the ballots. Or in favor. Okay, I think that's everything we've got.
You guys. Everything is that this is complete, as long as you guys are good to go, I think that's all we have.